Good evening. Welcome to the March 19th, 2018 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, the Vice Chair and at-large Member of the Board. And I'll let our other Members introduce theirselves, starting out on the right.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Terry Ossery, Charlevoles Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gaston Township.
Britt Moore, Crowder Mountain Township.
Doc Cherry, other at-large Member.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to have our prayer, and then after that we'll have a pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Ms. Guthrie to lead our invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we are so thankful for this another day. We ask, dear Father, that Thou would please bless this meeting and bless all that's in attendance, Father. We ask that you bless the Superintendent and his Cabinet. Oh God, we ask that you will give them wisdom and knowledge to do those things which are pleasing in your sight and that will enhance the betterment for our children. We ask, dear Father, a special blessing on our school security officers, Lord. Give them the vision and the knowledge to keep their eyes open to any and everything, Father, as our children go throughout the day. We ask that you bless those parents who are here this evening, as well as those parents that send their children to us each and every day. Bless the teachers, dear Father. Give them the opportunity to develop positive relationships with our children. Let our children be open to learning and changes, Lord. And we pray for the success of Gaston County Schools. Bless this Board, oh Lord, I pray. Let us continue to support all that's good in order to move our district forward. We ask it all in the name of your precious Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. Thank you for all being here. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have the proposed agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as present? Ms. Guthrie?
My second.
And second, Mr. Moore? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify in the right hand. It's unanimous. Mr. Booker, you share some good news with us tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, we have several good news items tonight. I first would like to invite Journey Greer from Tryon Elementary School forward. Members of the Board, Journey had the idea to start a coat drive at Tryon Elementary, and with the help of her classmates and teachers, she was able to collect 103 coats and 19 pairs of gloves for the Salvation Army. It is truly an accomplishment. This is totally driven by Journey. She spoke to her teacher, Elizabeth Glover, about the idea, and Ms. Glover encouraged her to meet with the Principal, Todd Dellinger, and Journey was responsible for all the posters and announcements to let other students know about the drive. As the spirit of giving continues, inspired by Journey's coat drive, we understand that another student at Tryon has come forward and hopes to host a blanket collection as well. So we are proud of everything that you have done, Journey, and we can't wait to see how you continue to make a difference as you continue your career with Gaston County. Mr. Osery, you know a little bit about Tryon.
Yes, sir, I do. This is just one example of why Tryon Elementary School is the perfect place to live. We've got two items for you. We have a certificate that says Outstanding Achievement for the Salvation Army Coat Drive. It's made out to you. And then, as a little token of your teacher and other Members of the school, we wanted you to have the news article that was published in the Gazette on Sunday, January 21st, 2018. This is fixed up so that you can proudly hang this and take this breath you will take with you, Journey. Tag sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gaston.
Thank you.
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 Many of you may have recognized Journey. She was also recognized for Do the Right Thing in our earlier months, so we really celebrate her efforts in our school. Now, I'd like to invite a couple folks from East Gaston High School to come forward. Mallory Mull, as well as her teacher, Justin Allison. I believe I saw Justin come in. And I believe Ms. Reeve, the Principal, is with us as well. Jennifer, are you out there? Come on up, Justin. This year, North Carolina Gets Smart Artwork Competition, the North Carolina Public Health Department sent out guidelines for the competition, and Mr. Allison wanted to get his upper-level art students involved with raising their awareness about antibiotic resistance. East Gaston submitted eight entries into the statewide competition, and Mallory Mull is the winner of the North Carolina State High School category. That deserves a round of applause, folks. As you visit your doctor's office, you may see the posters, because they have been printed and distributed across North Carolina to be posted in doctor offices as well as in high school health centers. So we wanted to recognize Mallory for representing Gaston County and East Gaston across the entire state of North Carolina. Congratulations. We are proud of you and what you have accomplished.
When did you finish?
About a month and a half ago, at an art show at Gaston College. Terrific, terrific artist, as are all of his art students. They told me about the award then, and I thought that was fantastic, and we needed to meet her. So, on behalf of the Board, I want to present you with her certificate for Outstanding Achievement for the NC Gets Smart Artwork Competition, first place in the whole state. So, yes, yes.
I thought you were trying to hide it for a second.
And then we're going to get your parents and grandparents, because I know they're here. Come on.
I hear they all home. That's okay. That's okay.
I'll have a seat.
That's okay.
I don't make parties.
A short people's such a guy.
You're shorter than me, that makes me feel...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gaston.
years is while, across the state, they debated class size reductions and where the funny would come from, this Board never discussed that we would cut the arts. And tonight, it's a recognition of that commitment. You just saw a student who won a statewide award. Now, we're going to get to recognize a few other art students, but we know that the arts goes beyond just drama and drawing. It's writing and all of those. And tonight, we get to recognize a number of students who received Gold Key Awards in the Mid-Carolina Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Program. Gaston County was the recipient of nine Gold Key Awards. And then when you add in the Silver Key Awards and all the honorable mentions, Gaston County won a total of 38 awards in the Scholastic Art Writing Awards Program, and that is for the entire Charlotte region. And when you add the Charlotte region up, you have almost a third of the students in the state. So that is quite an accomplishment to have 38 awards. So we would like to recognize our Gold Key winners with us tonight. We have, in the fashion category, Yasha Orr from Forestview High School. Come on forward, please. And then in film and animation, we have Bailey Cochran, Romelio Shipman, Lillian Combs, and Caitlin Waldrop, also from Forestview. If you all would join. In ceramics, from Stewart W. Kramer High School, we have Diana Turney. How close did I get that, Diana? Thank you, Turney. And in drawing and illustration, Asia Springs from Ashbrook High School, and Cyrus Weber from North Gaston High School. Then in the digital art category, Jaden Good from Cramertown Middle. In ceramics and glass, from Cramertown Middle, Sarah Nevada. In the critical essay category, Devon Tothrow from Gaston Early College High School. And into the poetry category, we had Erin Watson. And was Erin able to make it here, Mr. Denton?
No, she's still at the chorus, June, the chorus of June.
Thank you, Mr. Denton. So Erin has not made it, because she is such a gifted person, she is also involved in chorus. But we wanted to make a special mention for Erin, because she is a Silver Key winner on the national level, and the poem that she wrote will be displayed on a billboard in the Charlotte area. So these students represent all of those that I just read, and we want to congratulate you for all that you do to make us proud. And we want to also recognize all the educators that stand behind them, because art in Gaston County starts in kindergarten, and this is the fruit of that, folks. So this is something to be very proud of. Thank you.
Before I present the certificates, I want to say to our future fashion models, national authors and illustrators, designers, we are very proud of you here in Gaston County, and we know that this is just the beginning of your creativity as you continue to look into the arts. Thank you very much for your creativity. We like that. I scribbled, I didn't get anything from my... Forgetting something for me. Ms. Shaya? Okay. Certainly. Let me read. Certificate of Recognition presented to the name of the student, Outstanding Achievement, Mid-Carolina Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, presented on March 19th, 2018, Gaston County Schools by Kevin L. Collier, Chairman, Gaston County Board of Education, Deputy Jeffrey Booker, Superintendent of Gaston County Schools. Bailey? Marilyn? Caitlin? Ed? You're going to ask that you turn that one because I want to... Asian? Congratulations? Dennis? Yes. Jaden? Jaden? Ciana? Dana? Let's give them another round of applause.
I get to stand with all the snail through.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At the Board, congratulations.
Members of the Board, it's also a time when we get to recognize some of our outstanding First, we want to start with three basketball players from Charlevoles High School. They are Lane Harrell, Nathan Jeffers, and Maggie Barnes. Lane set a record for the most three-pointers by a sophomore player. Nathan took all tournament honors and was nominated for all district. And Maggie was a leader in scoring. They also earned all-conference honors in the Southern Piedmont 1A Conference. With them tonight are Coach Scott Harrell and Kerry Dalton, as well as Principal Kevin Dorn. If any of you all want to come forward and join them?
I need for the Maintenance Department to bring in the portable goal. Ms. Cherry and I and Mr. Dedman, we're going to take on these two along with Maggie Cooney.
I understand, Mr. Osery, you've known them when they used to look up to you.
That's exactly right. That is exactly right. In fact, this one, and I exchanged photos, when he was in the third grade, I was choking him. Seventh grade, he was choking him. But I can still take him in basketball. That's why I want him in the portable goal, so that we could prove that tonight. But I'm proud of him. In fact, I got to ride the bus with him this past weekend to the All-Star Game. Were we still in the United States? It's a long way. But Nathan, this is given to you for Outstanding Achievement, and also to you, Lane, for Outstanding Achievement. Congratulations to you all.
I'm skill-taking the basketball.
from indoor track and field. Hasani Burris from Ashbrook High School and Ben Finger from North Gaston High School. If you all could come forward. These two won the top awards in the North Carolina 3A Indoor Track Championship held in Winston-Salem. Hasani won the girls' triple jump and also placed second in the girls' long jump. Ben won the boys' pole vault competition. We wanted to congratulate both of you on your state championships, and thank you for representing Gaston County so well. You allowed us to have the best of the best in indoor track and field, and we are very proud of you.
Well, I can honestly say I've never done either one of those. I did run track when I was in shape, when the earth was cold. But congratulations, the triple jump is a tough, tough competition. And pole vaulting, I didn't even know we had it in our system. So, very, very... How many competitors did you date? Sixteen. How about you? Enough, right? Good. Okay. On behalf of our school system, I want to present you with two certificates. Hasani, yours is the 3A Indoor Track Championship for the triple jump competition. That is wonderful. And Ben, the 3A Indoor Track Championship for pole vault. All right. All right, Sean, let's get pictures. Do you have family here? Hasani's family, you want to come up? And Ben, you have...
Yes.
Okay. Y'all want to do separate ones or together? Come on. Come on. Rebecca? Y'all want to do separate, together, or both? And Coach? Sorry. I didn't see you. George, I didn't see you. Mike, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Well, I did. Where you want to stand, Sean?
That's perfect. And then Mr. Pat puts you actually here.
You're short. I like this. You can scoot a little. There you go. Perfect.
All right. You're going to sing?
Yes. I'm going to shake. I always got...
Mr. Ramsey, that concludes the good news for tonight. I want to thank all the families that are here supporting their students.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Next on the agenda is public expression. Ms. McGraw, does anyone sign up for public expression? All right, thank you. Next item is approval of corrections of minutes for January 19th and January 20th, 2018. This is an action item, so I will need a motion. Mr. Dedman makes a motion. The second, Ms. Cherry. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
I'm extremely excited to share with you our Classroom Moment, much anticipated. Our school choice in Pleasant Ridge, our new school, they've opened a new facility. They've come to share with us all the great things that are occurring at Pleasant Ridge Elementary. I think also Ms. Minnick has brought our academically-intellectually-gifted elementary teachers with her, so this is not a part of the Classroom Moment, but we would like to ask all of them to please stand at this time as they're trying to come in and get seated. And we're going to ask for you to give them a round of applause. They go to multiple schools to spread the extension activities and push our students, so we want to thank them for being here.
And they've had a very busy march. I was with them for math, Battle of the Books, I'm sure I'm forgetting other competitions that they've been leading, and it is phenomenal to watch that. And none of you want to go compete in the math, because that was very challenging.
That's right. But they do a really good job managing all those activities, Mr. Booker, and all of the gifted programs for our children in elementary school. It is a tough job, but they far exceed our expectations, so we want to thank them. If we could give them one more round of applause. And I'll turn over to Ms. Minnick at this time.
Good evening. I really am excited to be here tonight to talk to you about some of the wonderful things that are going on at Pleasant Ridge Elementary. And tonight, our focus is going to be enrichment clusters. And I know when I say that, the most pressing thing on your mind is, what on earth is an enrichment cluster? So, an enrichment cluster is an enriching investigative-type, multi-grade learning opportunity for the whole school community, which pairs students with the same interest together to explore solutions to real-world problems and/or issues. So that is a mouthful, and I think the best way to really understand what they are is to talk to you a little bit about the different clusters that they've been participating in at Pleasant Ridge and what they look like there. So at Pleasant Ridge, they have been meeting every Friday for 60 minutes for their enrichment cluster time. I want to start by talking to you a little bit about the K-2 options. So every student in kindergarten through second grade was given a list of 25 clusters that they could potentially participate in, and they were asked to rank their top three choices from those clusters. And then they were all assigned to one of their top three choices. So just a sampling of the ones that they talked about. Rambling Racers. So in Rambling Racers, they've been creating different styles of cars each week with different bodies, wheels, and materials. They make hypotheses and then create a car, test their hypothesis, and continue to make improvements. And of course, their favorite part of Rambling Racers is when they have race time with their creations. Another choice was Lights, Camera, Action. This enrichment cluster decided to perform the Gingerbread Man. Of course, the teacher thought for a little while she was going to have to rename it Gingerbread Men, because everybody wanted to be the running gingerbread man for this cluster, but they've had a great time learning about all of the things that go into a play production. Fun with Pictures was another option, and these students are taking pictures of things all around the school, and they are so excited to have real digital cameras. And if you've been there, they've probably asked for your picture. And if you've been there, they've probably asked for your picture because all of the things that they're doing, they're going to choose from and incorporate those into their yearbook this year. One of their other choices was Totally Tech. So these students had the opportunity to use dots and dashes and to control their movements using a programming app. They also had the chance to explore other tech devices and programmed Spheros. Trash to Treasure was another option for these students, and they're using recyclable materials to create a variety of treasures. So they've inspired the school to begin a recycling program sponsored by the PTO. And when you walk in the school, right to the right, you see brand-new metal recycling cans where they collect recyclables. And then every week, these students and students from all the clusters go shopping in the recyclable materials to see if there's anything that they can use in the next week. And not the last choice, but the last K-2 choice that we're going to talk about tonight was Party Animal Event Planning. And in Party Animal Event Planning, these students had a guest speaker that showed them how to create a plan that covers all of the details for an event because there's many details that go into that. And right now, these students are currently working with the PBIS Committee to plan a reward celebration for the students of Pleasant Ridge. And then they're also working directly with one of our community partners, Victory Baptist Church, to create a celebration for the teachers. Some of the choices for our third through fifth grade students, and again, they were given the 25 choices that were different from K-2 and ranked their top three, was Minecraft. Probably the most selected one of all of the students, they had over 250 students list this as one of their three choices. And then these students are creating a community within Minecraft, but what I think is really exciting is they're learning a lot about being a community outside of Minecraft as well. And they spend time learning about that, creating part of their world that they're creating in Minecraft with Legos, and learning about all the different things that are involved with that. Pause for a Cause. When I was at Pleasant Ridge today, I saw a poster asking for donations for pet supplies and things that can help pets, and that's been one of the big focuses for this group. And the facilitators of this group had a representative from Tri-County Animal Shelter come and share with the students more about what they do. And then after hearing these concerns, that led them to the discussion for what they wanted their product to be, and that was to be sponsors of a collection of things that the animal shelter could use. So they went through the steps of creating a campaign, and they made the posters for the school, and they've worked with Mr. Cook to have it part of his weekly communication out to the families. The Fit Nation. This group has chosen to look at the way various exercises impact different parts of the body, and they've been exercising and have chosen to create a display showing different workouts a person can do for each part of their body. CSI Meets Pleasant Ridge. These students are looking at hypothetical crime scenes and trying to determine the person who committed the crime. A detective from Gastonia Police Department came and showed this group some of the tools that they use when they investigate a real crime. Chess was one of the options, and this was a group with varied skills when they came in. So some of the students that already knew how to play chess jumped right into playing games and learning how to be more strategic and become experts, and those that didn't know anything began by learning how several different pieces move and playing a game with just those pieces, and they're all working their way through to being real chess masters. And then the last choice that I want to tell you about is Panther Pause, the video production crew. And this enrichment cluster created videos of procedures at Pleasant Ridge, and they want to be able to show these videos to new students to talk about what a life at Pleasant Ridge is all about. One of their videos has focused on asking students their favorite thing about Pleasant Ridge, and guess what most of them said? Enrichment clusters. Yes, they do love Mr. Cook, too. Yeah. They also want to connect their videos to QR codes that would be included in the yearbook to make it come alive for the students, which I think is a great idea. So that's just a sampling of some of that, but we do have some students from Pleasant Ridge that I think can bring it to life a little better than I can. I'm going to ask Ms. Milton to come up with them and let them tell you a little bit about their experiences.
Hi, our first one will go in order as far as K-2. This is Rihanna Deal, and she did the event planning with the Party Animal Event Planning, I think is the official title, but she'll tell you about her events.
My name is Rihanna Deal, and I have been in Party Animals Event Planning Enrichment Cluster. So far, my favorite part of the cluster has been planning an event for the teachers, and I have learned a lot of details and the hard work it takes to plan an event. I have also learned about marketing and budgeting process for events. For the SEM Showcase, we made the flyer for the event and helped organize parts of it. One, propose party, behavior parties for WIX and PBIS team. Two, teacher social event. Three, lead a meeting to teach the teachers about the resources from Gaston, Gateway-Gaston Resource Connection that include counseling, career coaching, military peer support, financial coaching, and physical health and wellness.
All right, next we have Jackson Hibbs with the videography.
My name is Jackson Hibbs, and I've been in Panther Pause Videography Enrichment Cluster. So far, my favorite part of the cluster has been planning how to video the life of Pleasant Ridge. We use iPads to go around and video different things going on in the school. Our product, SEM Enrichment Cluster Showcase, will be creating an iMovie with our video
The next one is Toone Day Olle from CSI.
Hi, my name is Toone Day Olle, and I've been in CSI Pleasant Ridge Enrichment Cluster. So far, my favorite part of the cluster's been solving crimes. We use plaster repairs to create footprints, and we have looked at fingerprints, too. We have, we had a detective from the police department come and show us a lot of his tools, like my power to solve crimes. I also like seeing his laser beam, and it has been a cool, and it's been cool to learn about.
And then we had Aiden Ellis, and he did Minecraft.
My name is Aiden Ellis, and I'm in the enrichment cluster of Minecraft, and my favorite part about the enrichment cluster so far is building structures with my group.
Okay, the last day for enrichment clusters this year is actually this Friday, so they would love it if you had an opportunity to go by and visit during cluster time. If not, next year, they will be doing them two times. They'll do one set of clusters in the fall and one in the spring, and we will be sure to update you on when those will be happening. So, any questions for me or the students?
I think we probably have a lot of comments more, which dot once a go.
Well, of course I'll go. Oh my, young people, we are so very proud of you. Let me tell you what I heard. I heard critical thinking. I heard problem solving. I heard working together as a team to resolve a problem. I heard sequencing. I heard Minecraft. I heard using QR codes, which I like. I heard career development. I heard so many wonderful things, but more importantly, I felt perhaps that there is synergy in the room when you are working together as a group. And I want you to know that we are very proud of you and how well you work together to find a solution, detective work, or to accomplish a skill. Fantastic job, well done.
I'll say it simply. I saw fun, and when you have fun, it's easier to learn, right?
Yeah.
So, and are y'all having fun? Good, that makes me happy. So, and if I'm happy, y'all are happy, and makes you learn more. So, I'm glad.
As a board member, we want to thank y'all. This is a choice program that we're excited about, and it's kind of the first start of it, and we see the excitement of the parents, the kids, opening up a whole new world for them. And before they leave, we'd like to recognize Mr. Cook and their leadership. You have any assistant principal with you?
No, sir.
Would you like to make any comments or anything?
Before we discuss, I do want to say thank you as well. Have somebody with us that I would like to introduce.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to take a moment to introduce Ms. Ava Woods. Ava's a fourth grade student who works hard in the classroom and excels in the arts. Ava made this card, made this card for the board, and we just want to say Pleasant Ridge thanks Gaston County Schools and the board for the investment in our students.
Wow.
That's beautiful.
That is nice.
Mr. Cook, yeah, we want to bring her around and shake their hand, congratulations for all the good work.
Ava, we want you to get in line, too, because we love that card. Thank you so much for what you're doing. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank Minecraft. Good work. Fantastic job. So creative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my friend.
That was so thoughtful of you. Thank you so much.
Students, don't leave, please. We'd like to get a picture if we could.
I thought you gave candy. You don't put a sugar in candy, huh? Yes, I can understand. I would like all the teachers to stand again, please, because we know that this is extra work for you in addition to your curriculum, so please stand again. We want you to know that we greatly appreciate what you're doing.
All right.
Okay, all right, all right. But we'll talk anyway because we know that that's extra work.
Thank y'all.
If you all, if you're following, you all pick them up front first to make a picture of our AIG.
Brian, may you take the picture? I mean, can we not get any work out of you?
Brian, you can walk.
Yeah, Brian, it's yourself.
Put something back here. There you go, perfect. Everybody's there, perfect. I did Brian.
All right, big smile.
Y'all don't walk away, y'all come introduce yourselves to us. Yeah, come on. Next on our agenda is the 2018-2019 Superintendent Budget Request, and I'll ask Gary Hoskins to come up and share the information.
And while Mr. Hoskins pulls his presentation up, I'll just remind you all that tonight is the superintendent's budget presentation for you all for the 2018-19 school year. As Gary presents tonight, you'll notice that some of the things you have to deal with are mandated to you by the state, and that is things such as our retirement benefits, which is an 8% increase, our health insurance, which is a 4% increase, also because of some changes in the way E-rate is calculated, we now have to pick up our phone and cellular bills. You will have things such as end-of-life mobile devices that we have to continue to replace to keep ourselves moving forward. And so tonight's presentation is for information, and we'll be glad to answer any questions, but also in the weeks ahead, because this will work towards your April meeting where you would work towards your budget that we would ultimately in May submit to the commissioners. Mr. Collier has reached out, and County Manager Mathers is trying to secure a date for the two boards to meet together for some conversation because that was requested, the initial discussions we had about our budget. And I would, you know, like to give credit where credit is due. The county over the last three years has increased our overall budget operating-wise from $44.9 million to $48.9 million, and the majority of that money has gone into teacher supplement. And that is a commitment that you as a board have made, it's the commitment the survey has talked about to fund our teachers and make our supplement more competitive, and the commissioners have done that. And County Manager Mathers has committed that he would like to, in his initial budget, put $500,000 to continue that increase. So we think that's a very positive move that reflects on the way the two boards are working together. So, Mr. Hoskins, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. Just an update on the calendar. We are on track to have our budget requests presented to the county commissioners by the statutory deadline of May 15th. As Mr. Booker mentioned earlier, we will bring the superintendent's budget request to this board on April 16th. We were originally going to do it, I think, when there was a work session on the second, but since that failed during spring break, we consolidated, I think, two meetings, so it'll be on the 16th. And then we will be asking for you to adopt it at your work session on May 7th. So again, so we can get this presented to the county commissioners by the May 15th. Again, this is, we're in the second year, or next year will be the second year of a biennial state budget, so we expect that the state budget will be approved fairly quickly, but that's beyond our control, and we're trying to, you know, keep our ears open to see what's going on with the General Assembly. Right now, we're not hearing a lot of talk about it. We think it'll be fairly, fairly quick. I think a lot of the parameters have already been set when they did this year's budget, so we'll just keep an eye on that. When we talk about our requests to the county, we have actually two requests. One will be the operating request, and the other will be the capital request. And in our operating request, we'll have, again, two different requests. One is ongoing expenditures, and the other is new initiatives. And our ongoing expenditures will be what it will cost us an incremental increase to continue operating the way that we're operating now. So if you just think back, think about inflation and your household budget, as those costs go up, you're paying more money, but you're... up, you're paying more money, but you're getting the same standard of living. That's similar to what our operating expenditure request will entail. And the second is new initiatives, and those are those things that we see that we'd like to improve our school system. You just saw one of those new initiatives with our Pleasant Ridge Gifted and Talented Academy. We'll also be talking about what we'd like to do at Stanley and one of our new initiatives. So as we look at our ongoing expenditures, we talked a little bit about this at the last work session, I think I handed out the worksheets. Our total for ongoing expenditures is $1.2 million. As Mr. Booker mentioned, some of that will be state mandated increases and employer-paid benefits, and that is our contribution to the state retirement fund. Every employee takes 6% out of their paycheck to put into the state employee retirement fund. Our, or the employer's portion of that has gradually been moving up and will be exceeding over 18% this next year. Right now, it's about 17%. And also, health insurance premiums, those are, again, are continuing to inch up, and so we factor that in. Secondly, the replacement of end-of-life mobile devices. We've mentioned, I think in previous presentations, that our student-to-device ratio is about a 1.3 students for every device. These devices have been bought three or four years ago, some of them, and we expect that some of those will be failing. And in order to stay at a 1.3 student-to-device ratio, we'll be replacing those, and that will keep us where we currently are. Charter school enrollment, as that continues to go up, we have to remit more money to the charter schools. And finally, the elimination of E-rate reimbursements. Again, we talked about that a little bit last meeting. We used to be getting reimbursements that we could use for improving technology through E-rate. That's been eliminated or reduced 20% a year over the last five years. So this next year coming up, we will not receive any reimbursements from E-rate. The other part of our operating expansion request is new initiatives. The first item on here, we did not talk about last time, I think the board actually brought this up, and so we've been talking a little bit with the county on this, and that's enhanced school security. This would provide for 16 full-time equivalent positions, so that's not 16 people, but maybe half a position at two different places, to try to get, or to increase our school security at all of our school locations. So these are SRO positions, 16 SRO positions that would beef up our school security on our campuses. Second item is the certified employee salary supplement. As Mr. Booker talked about, this board has been working with the county commissioners over the last couple of years to try to increase our teacher supplement. Last year, they bumped it up $500,000. We're asking for an additional 500 this year, which I think they've already committed to doing, and also to increase our classified employee salary adjustment. That's a 3% cost of living adjustment for those non-certified employees. Expanding school choice options, this will provide for the STEAM Academy at Stanley Middle School, which we plan to start next year, similar to, again, what we did last year with Pleasant Ridge, was a Gifted and Talented Academy. This will give our Hawks' Nest children, when they move out of 5th grade and go into middle school, a path, a STEAM-related path, which we currently don't have right now. The next one is update our central office IT infrastructure. A lot of our funding and focus has been on upgrading the access points and switches in our schools. We've not been able to spend as much time, effort, and money improving that with our central office, and we're getting to the point where now we're going to have to increase or upgrade central office if we're going to continue to upgrade our individual schools. And then also, the cost to bring us to a one student-to-one-device ratio for computers. So last year, our request to the county for this current year was $49.8 million. That included what we received the previous year of $49.3 million, and then ongoing expenditures and new initiatives of about $4.7 million. This year, we're asking for just over $52 million, and that includes the $1.2 million in ongoing expenditures and $3 million in new initiatives. The second part of our request to the county will be for capital, and of course, that includes all the primary capital, mechanical items in the buildings, roofing, HVAC, plumbing, et cetera. Our routine maintenance cost for these buildings is primarily based upon or affected by the age of the buildings, the quality of our custodial staff, and our deferred maintenance backlog. And so we've been working on getting that backlog reduced. Our custodial staff, we have a custodian university, a training seminar that we do for a day every summer. We have regional custodial leaders, three of those, that go out to the various schools and help train when necessary. So we try to keep them as up to date as we can. And you can see the age of our buildings, this is before Stanley opened, because of course, that was just last week, but about 50% of our buildings are 40 years old or older, and almost 20% of our buildings are 60 years old or older. So we do have some old buildings, although we're doing a good job of trying to improve that. One of the things we like to look at every year is a report from the Council of Great City Schools. This is a national publication that looks at primarily just school districts and school expenditures, and what they have determined in their most recent report was that the cost of keeping a school, the routine maintenance for a typical school ranges from $1.42 per square foot to $0.93 per square foot. So when you look, and here's the chart, those numbers have not really varied a lot over the last four years. So when you look at the 5.2 million square feet of space that we have, if you just put the median on there of $1.13, $1.14, that would result in a routine capital maintenance need of $5.9 million, and we currently only get $1.2 million, and that's just under $0.25 per square foot. So our next steps is, you know, number one, we've got to finalize this Superintendent's Budget Request, which when you approve it, it will become the Gaston County Schools' Budget Request, present that request to the county, and then continue to work to address the capital needs of this district. And of course, anytime we work on our budget, we always try to keep our vision and mission in mind in all that we do. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it over to you.
Any of the board member have any questions for Gary? Only thing I want to make comment, I know that the federal government is looking for more money for safer school initiatives, for funding some of this, so I know the county commissioners attended their annual meeting in DC last week, and they mentioned that there will be federal funding coming down that will help us with initiative for safer Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our Title I Grant Application. Dr. Bocknight? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mark that wrong. Well, Mr. Booker, we'll let you handle that one.
Thank you. Members of the board, we're very excited about the pending school bond issue and the sales tax vote, and what we wanted to do tonight was present to you the information packet that we are preparing. I want to thank in advance Mr. Hagens and his team for all the hard work that they have done. We have two individuals out in the audience, Mr. Will Newman and Mr. Steve Deaver, who are chairing the Citizens Committee that is out working on the bonds, and they have been anxious to see this presentation, to give them some information. And so let me just walk you through the presentation that we will be making over the coming days in our community. So as you all know, the bond election is on Tuesday, May 8th, and the voters will get to look at a $250 million school bond referendum. And so one of the things that we know is important to do is to give people something that they can look at and digest in today's world. And so Todd's team has developed the following video that I'd like for you to view.
Here in Gaston County, we want great schools for our children. Schools that are safe with modern classrooms where effective teaching and learning takes place every day. Unfortunately, our schools are at a critical crossroads, and we must decide now what kind of schools we want for the future. On Tuesday, May 8th, the citizens of Gaston County will have the opportunity to vote on a $250 million school bond referendum. If approved, we will be able to build new schools, add classroom buildings, expand libraries and cafeterias, and make critical repairs and renovations. $110 million will be used to build a new elementary school and two new middle schools, and $25 million will go toward classroom additions and the expansion and renovation of libraries and cafeterias. The largest portion, $115 million, will address the most critical repairs and renovations needed at our schools. Schools in every township across the county will receive funds for necessary repairs in areas such as electrical, lighting, and life safety, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, water, sewer, and gas lines, doors and windows, roof replacement, and parking lot and driveway improvements. It is important to point out that a majority of our schools in our community are more than 40 years old, and repairs are desperately needed right now. Plus, as the Charlotte region continues to grow, so will Gaston County, and we will need more classroom space to accommodate students and alleviate overcrowding. That's why the school bond referendum on Tuesday, May 8th, is so important. Your vote will have a direct effect on the future of our schools and the quality of education that our children receive right here in Gaston County.
So I'd like to, Tom Nocetti for his work on that, and I think that's a quality production. You can see in three minutes, it gives you a pretty good oversight of the bonds and what is going on. Our communications department will continue to develop some little vignettes. There'll be 30 to 45 seconds to just let some of our parents and students talk about this opportunity. But we know from experience that people will have questions, and so we've developed this that talks about what are the five big questions? Well, number one, what are the school bonds for? Well, the $250 million starts with the $110 million in new school construction. That new school construction is for three schools. A new elementary school that will be located in the southeast Gastonia related to growth. And people say, why are you not naming these schools? Well, one of the commitments that has been is that this bond issue will be expended over a seven-to-10-year period. Growth is happening today, so rather than say it will be at place X, we are watching the growth and we will identify that location as it comes forward, because we know the way the funding for these bonds are, that we're not going to receive $250 million at one time. That's the same discussion about the new middle school. You have identified that you would like to replace the former high schools that operate as middle schools, but we'll need to look at growth and what drives that and serving all of our students and the entire county. The new middle school in Belmont has already been identified. The land has been purchased through funds that the county made available, and the county has also given you the funds to hire the architect, and that picture, or the school is under design, and this picture just shows you the location of that property. That's why you're able to identify that site, and you know that the first bond issued dollars that are sold would be to fund that middle school. Now, the $25 million in school additions covers three main categories. Classroom additions. We all know that the class size mandate will cause some need for additional classrooms, particularly in our growth areas. When you do classrooms, you typically have to address the media center and the cafeterias to support those additional students that you may have. At the same time, we are committed to a choice program. We're going to offer choice programs that may require modification of some of our facilities. So this $25 million would be allocated to allow that to occur. And then finally, the remainder of the $250 million is $115 million. And as you know, that's the largest portion of the 250, and this spreads money across the entire county and all of the townships, because we have needs throughout the county. When you talk about renovations and repairs, you're talking about things like electrical and lighting. Anyone who's dealt with the current changes in light bulbs and what goes on knows that buildings of our age have some needs. Life safety is always a critical challenge for our school system, and we need to continue to update that. And of course, water, gas, and sewer lines get a lot of publicity throughout the country because of the aging of them, and Gaston County is no different than the majority of our country. Phenomenal growth in the post-World War II means that we need to address the same things. And so all of these were what we deem to be renovations and repairs. So when you look at the $115 million, people begin to say, well, how will that money be allocated across the county? And so, based on the number of schools that are spread in the respective townships, the Cherville Township would get 5.8 million, Crowders Mountain Township 12.1, Dallas Township 14.5, the Gastonia Township 38.7, the Riverbend Township 21.6, and the South Point Township 20.3. That is the bulk of the $115 million. There is approximately $2 million that are there for other ancillary facilities, but the majority is going into those townships. And to help people understand that, Todd's team has developed these charts, and so each check represents the type of work, so those columns represent what we have said are typical repair renovations. It shows the respective school in that township, and then it gives a check of how that would be done. These are the needs that are identified. We know that 12.1 million in Crowders Mountain won't clear all those checks, but these are the types of projects that have been identified so that people can get an idea of what we're looking at. And you will see life safety getting a lot of checks, because that is our first priority. And then, so this is done for all of the townships. So that really sums up what the $250 million will cover in some form of detail, because I know that's one of the questions people have asked, where is our detail? But I think it's really important to look at this picture. This picture summarizes all of our schools, and you have 55 schools in Gaston County. 54 of them have a physical place that are represented by the dots, and then the 55th school is our virtual school. And I think what's really important for you to note is that of those 55 potential places to work, 49 of them are identified to have some kind of work. Well, how did those six get left out? Well, first of all, the virtual school doesn't have a physical building to work on. We would say that the brand-new Stanley Middle, Pleasant Ridge, and Stuart W. Kramer do not need any work. Gaston Early College is a relatively new facility and is on the Gaston College campus, and they take care of that. And then finally, Belmont Middle is being replaced. So that is the six schools that do not receive any of the $115 million. So I think that shows, folks, what you're doing with that money. So the next logical question is, well, why was it $250 million? Well, several folks sitting around this dais served on a committee that looked, and that committee talked and said, after all this study, you all have commissioned an independent architect to come in and look at 13 of our older schools that were spread throughout the county. You took the state bond requirement where the Department of Public Instruction every five years requires you to do an assessment of your facilities, and they dictate what the numbers are and how it's calculated. All those led to a $650 million number. Well, there's no one that thinks we can bite off a $650 million, so to make it a manageable amount, you did a first bond issue of 250, a second of 200, and a third. And this was a great collaborative effort between the two boards to develop that amount. And so then the next question that people may say, okay, if you say you have $650 million in needs, well, how did we get here? Why do we? Why do we need these bonds?" Well, what we have said as a community, and what many communities have done as a strategic plan, is that you have a capital improvement plan that says, "We're not going to fund this in one lump sum, but we'll do it over a period of time and use bonds to allow it to pay for it," so that it's a number of years instead of trying to come up with one lump sum. So this is a thing that has been done for really since the beginning of the school system. And remember, we'll celebrate our 50th anniversary this coming school year. So what do we know about why we need school bonds? The aging facilities. You all know better than anyone the overall age of our buildings, and to think that 60% of them are greater than 20 years, and that then you've got almost 40% greater than 50 years, it just shows we're there, and you need to continue to be renovating. Everyone paints and does those things on an ongoing basis. And finally, we know that we will continue to grow as a community, which is a benefit. But you know, one of the things that's impressive when you look at our aging facilities is while they've aged and they have repairs and they need replacements, when you look at the pictures of our facilities, our folks do a great job of trying to make them presentable and doing the best with what we have. And so, I am pleased with what we do with it, and this is part of saying to the community, "You can find us to be a good steward." Folks will say, "Well, why didn't they fix this or why didn't they fix that?" You know, $3.4 million repairs for HVAC replacements are challenging, so that's not covered in a $1.2 million annual capital allowance. That's why historically this community has funded it through bonds. That's why we've always had such a large approval rating in bonds because you present what you are doing. This also shows when someone says, "Well, how did you come up with township percentages in the dollars?" We did a weighted average of the age of the buildings, and we also did a weighted average based on the number of schools. So that's what this chart is, just so people can see that it wasn't a number plucked out of the air, which just allows, again, for detail and clarity. But remember, when you talk about old buildings, even when they've been taken care of, they're still very dated. They still may not need today's codes. You look at the changes that may need to be done to electrical, HVAC. Anyone who's driven into our parking lots knows that we are challenged with that, and it's because when we make choices, we make choices that directly serve our education on a day-to-day basis. I've spoken earlier about the structural lighting, and you see those requirements. And then roofing, in this picture, you can get a really good idea of why roofing is so expensive. In the forefront there, you see a roof that is failing, the dark areas are where it's starting to fail, but look at all that gray that runs behind it. That school is an 120,000-square-foot building with a lot of roofing. That won't be done cheaply, and that, again, is why we typically go for capital to do those things. And then we start talking about growth. Since 2000, there've been over 4,500 single-family, mixed-use, and multifamily residential units approved. There've also been 9,500 single-family, mixed-use, and proposed. Those are starting to come to fruition in our community. And recently, the county commissioners received a presentation, and this was what was one of the big slides that was prepared by their staff for them, and that green circle is really interesting on that. And this is based on 2016 Census track data. Inside that green circle represents over a third of the population in Gaston County, and it really approaches almost 40% of the population in Gaston County. And that's what you've identified as the potential needed to meet growth. So then the question becomes, "How will we pay for school bonds?" That's where the sales tax comes into it. It's a separate issue on the ballot. It's an opportunity to try and minimize the burden on property owners, but to take and use the purchasing power that goes on in our community to pay for the school bonds. The county has committed that this sales tax will be used to pay the bond debt. They expect it to generate $6 million per year, which equates to a penny for every $4 spent. And to put it in some kind of perspective, many of you probably bought a cup of coffee today, may have spent $4 on it. If you spent $4 on that cup of coffee, this quarter cent sales tax would cost you an extra penny. We think that penny is a reasonable thing to consider when we talk about educating our children. But as soon as we start talking about money and how we pay for things, people want to say, "Well, what about the lottery? The lottery was supposed to solve a lot of these problems." Well, what the lottery does is provide a little over $2 million a year in direct funding to the county. The lottery provides other funding, but that is used at the state level for teaching positions, pre-K resources, things that never flow directly into Gaston County. We may see the benefit of those in the way they allocate teaching positions and resources, but that money is not controlled by the county or the school system. The money that we receive in actual cash is averaged a little over $2 million, and our county, as most counties in the state have done, have elected to use that to pay the school bond debt and to lessen that burden on the taxpayers. So finally, why are school bonds so important? Well, I think there's no better way to talk about it than to talk about our last bond issue. In 2007, voters approved that. Do you know that over 40 of our schools were touched in some form with a renovation and repair with the 2007 bondment? Now, a lot of that occurred with the savings because you used some good construction methods, and you had over $8 million in savings on the new construction that you then went back and allocated and tried to do typical renovation and repair projects, and it allowed you to meet that 44 schools. The big projects that people need to recall from the 2007 bonds were renovations at Hunter Huss. This is a picture of the Hunter Huss Media Center. It is state-of-the-art, and it was a beautiful job, and you have been there for, you've held board meetings there, we've held community talks there. It is a 21st-century facility that we are very proud of, and I think that it's an example of the stewardship of bond money. Also, in the 2007 bond issue, you were to build a new elementary school in the Union Road area. Well, there was a Hope Lutheran School that was no longer going to operate. You utilized money and purchased that facility, renovated it, and adapted it, and that's now where Hawksnest Steam Academy is appropriated. It was several million dollars of savings to do that construction and renovation rather than to build from the start. Another great project that was part of that 2007 bond issue was the Stuart W. Kramer High School Project. Now, let's remember, that project was budgeted in the early 2000s. The bond was campaigned for in 2007 and approved, but those funds weren't issued until 2010. Again, remember, seven-year period. And that project, even though you'd had almost an eight-year period from the time it was budgeted for to the time it was delivered, that project was $8 million under budget. That project was less than $60 million all-in, buying the land, doing the road improvements, doing the infrastructure improvements. That was a project that people have come from all over the country to review and look at it and say, "How did you build this building for less than $135 a foot?" So that was a very well-constructed project that will serve this district for many years. This year, we've had the pleasure of opening up Pleasant Ridge Elementary. And if you couldn't get excited to see those children, now I want you to remember some of the numbers they talked about of the choices that our children are given once they're inside. So first of all, this is a choice option for our community, and over 200 families have exercised that choice option. But once they've been in that school with these enhancement classes that go on Friday, the children have had another round of choices and to do. And you saw what they're doing in engagement. And I know you were invited to be there Friday. I have been there on two different Fridays, and it is amazing, the energy that is in that room and what that faculty is doing. But that school is beautiful, and you maximized. You didn't purchase new land for it. You built it on-site behind the existing school. And you've done the same thing at Stanley Middle. The opening of that school last week was phenomenal, and to watch those kids and to watch them light up and recognize how honored they felt to be a part of a new school and the pride that they were taking in that new school, that's what a new school does beyond giving them state-of-the-art. It shows people care and invest in me, and I believe that that school will serve this community just as well as the high school that became a junior high that became a middle school. This school will have the same capacity to serve our community. So what all this means behind those questions is, school bonds are important. They are vital to our community because we want the best for our students and teachers. We want modern classrooms, but through it all, we want our schools to be safe, and that's what these dollars have allowed us to do, make our schools safer. And we always want great schools for the future. Now, we'll continue to provide information. Our role is that we can talk about what our needs are. We can provide the information in the background. We can do this presentation and provide it. And I will be speaking at a number of places along with the two gentlemen that are with us tonight. And so, we will have our website, which will have a quick link for school bonds that you can quickly find to keep updated, because as people ask questions, clarifications, we will try to do that. But I want to leave you with this. Great schools equal great jobs. Great schools equal a great economy. Great schools equal great growth. And great schools equal a great place to live, work, play, and raise a family. And it will ultimately benefit the most valuable asset we have in this community, our children. So on May 8th, I believe that people will vote for our future, and people will support our future because they believe in inspiring success and a lifetime of learning. So thank you for listening to our school bond presentation. So Mr. Chair, I also have work that I wanted to provide you all. These are handouts that we will be using with our schools. And so, it basically is a summation of the school bond reports, and then it shows the charts that were in this presentation. And tomorrow, with our principals, we will be presenting this and allowing them to have the same information to go back and share with their school staffs. We'll be having our parent advisory meeting next week to share the same information along with numerous other pieces of information about what's going on in our district. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Booker, I wanted to, on behalf of the board, the thorough job and great presentation. I know Todd's team helped a lot on the videos and other pictures of it. So anyone want to make a comment or questions for Mr. Booker?
I have a question and a comment. First, I want to say to the superintendent that that was very well presented and clearly understood why it's so important for our community to get out, to support that bond issue. And I wanted to ask you, I do know that probably this was recorded, right? And it will be played back. Can you tell me the dates that maybe this would be played back so that I can get the community send out information so that they can watch this presentation to get more information? Because it's going to be important for even the churches to take the time to run this through their technology until that time.
We will post the short video, the three-minute video, as a separate link on the webpage that they could access. And then this broadcast will be posted on the website, but I believe Mr. Nansetti can probably cut this presentation and make it a separate that we could do. That's a great idea. We had not thought about that.
If you will let us know that, then we can advocate for that in the communities and with the churches and the constituents in our groups.
Great. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Booker? Okay, we'll move forward.
Yeah, I would like to again thank Mr. Newman and Mr. Deavere for the work they're doing. I know the other night, Mr. Deavere was at one city council meeting at 6:00, and then he went to another at 7:00 to talk about that. The commissioners have sent a resolution to all the communities asking them to pass resolutions in support of this, and we just encourage everyone to get out and vote on that day.
Okay. Thank you again. Moving forward, on the next part of the agenda is Title I grant application. I'll ask Dr. Bachnight to share with us. And this is an action item?
I do have Melissa Buchanan with me this evening, our coordinator of Title I. We've talked about Title I quite often. I think that's a good, healthy process to get to where we need to, to be good evaluators of our funds to reach the most students. So Ms. Buchanan is going to share our final steps to approval of our Title I plan so that we can move forward with state and federal approval.
Good evening, Gaston County Board of Education Vice Chairman Ramsey and Superintendent Booker. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present to you the 2018-2019 Title I Plan. Title I is the largest education program, federal program in the United States. It provides additional funding to schools who have a high percentage or high number of economically disadvantaged students. The purpose of Title I is to provide resources and opportunities for all students, but particularly for those students who are struggling to meet the academic demands of the state standards. Historically, Gaston County schools, in order for an elementary school to be served with Title I funds, they had to have at least 60% of their population participating with their free and reduced lunch program. Moving forward, we would like to decrease that threshold to 40%. That's actually the lowest threshold that we can go based on federal guidelines. We would like to serve our middle schools who have a 75% free and reduced lunch percentage. In doing so, this will increase our numbers from serving 24 schools to serving 30 schools. That's 25 elementary schools, four middle schools, and one alternative school. Because Title I currently operates school-wide programs, we will go from serving 11,657 students to 14,725 students. This next number is particularly, I think, exciting because we will go from serving 6,588 students who have been identified as economically disadvantaged to 11,761. So that just goes to show that we're going to be able to serve more students who actually need those resources. The unfortunate thing is that regardless of the number of students or the number of schools that we choose to serve, we do not receive any more funding from the United States Department of Education. We receive typically about $9.1 million annually. So as a district, we have to decide, we have to be strategic in the way that we distribute our Title I dollars. With the use of poverty bands, we will be able to increase funding to our most impoverished schools while increasing the number of students served. Poverty bands is not anything new. Many districts or surrounding districts are already using this method. So how do poverty bands work? So currently, the way we distribute our Title I allocations, our school allocations, is every school, regardless of how many, what their free and reduced lunch percentage is, they all get the same per-pupil allotment. In moving to poverty bands, we would divide our schools into three tiers or to three bands. The first band being schools who have 100% to 80% of the students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch program. They would receive a per-pupil allotment of about $425, or $425, excuse me. So that means that every student that was identified as economically disadvantaged, that school would get $425. In poverty band two, those students would, those schools would be 79% to 59% free and reduced lunch, and that school would, those schools would receive $406 per student who was identified as economically disadvantaged. And in the lower band, band three, those would be schools that have 58% to 40% of students who are eligible for the free and reduced lunch program, and they would receive a reduced per-pupil allotment of $232 per student. We would like to continue the support that we provide at the district level through the use of our math support teachers, our curriculum facilitators, and our literacy teachers. Our literacy teachers and our math support teachers, they are, even though we fund them 100% at the district level, they 100% at the district level, they would be, they are housed in our schools 100% of the time. Our literacy teachers, they provide small group instruction through the Level Literacy Intervention Kits. They serve one, they have a teacher-to-student ratio of one to four. They're able to see about seven to eight groups a day. And because students can graduate out of that program, they're able to see about 80 students a year. The math support teacher program is for our middle school. They have our middle school and our alternative school. The math support teachers, they have a dual role. They work as a math coach for supporting teachers, but they also are able to support students in the classrooms. So as a math coach, they would provide resources. They provide modeled lessons. They provide instructional feedback to teachers, and they do co-teaching. They usually do push-in in the classrooms to provide support to our students. The curriculum facilitators would be school-wide support, so they work in at the district office. However, we're able to decrease that ratio to, from about one facilitator to 12 schools to one facilitator supporting six schools. So they're able to do professional development for our schools. They're able to provide instructional feedback to our teachers in our schools. And this is probably the most exciting part of our Title I plan moving forward is, research has shown us that the more students have access to books, the better readers they become. So Title I is, from the district level, this is not coming from school allocations. Title I will provide every elementary classroom with classroom libraries plus every ELA middle school classroom with classroom libraries. So in summary, what we would like to do moving forward is to decrease our threshold for our elementary schools to serve. We'd like to decrease that to 40%, which is the lowest that federal guidelines will allow us to go. We'd also like to continue this, continue to provide our district support through our math support teachers, our literacy teachers, and our curriculum facilitators. We would like to do our school allocations, calculator school allocations using poverty bands, and to provide all of our Title I elementary classrooms with classroom libraries and our ELA middle school classrooms with classroom libraries. Do you have any questions?
Does any of the board members have any questions or comments? I know, I think y'all, okay.
I just love the presentation. Really, it's going to really afford every school with the opportunity to enhance its literacy program and to make certain that the classroom libraries are being used. And I like the idea of having the literacy facilitators work together to make sure that there's balance across the district, which is wonderful. I just see a win-win all the way around, really, with this new opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is an action item, so I will need a motion on the floor. Ms. Guthrie, motion second by Ms. Cherry. Any questions? If not, please vote with your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Buchanan, for a good presentation. Moving on to our agenda, we have a consent agenda, and this is an action item. I need a motion on the floor. Ms. Cherry, second. Mr. Ushry, any discussion? All in favor, signify right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey, members of the board. A couple of things I wanted to highlight that you just supported us with on the consent agenda, adopting the Early College Calendar. That's a collaboration that we have to work with Gaston College and their calendar. And so appreciate your consent on that. Our high school exam schedules that we had presented at the last work session are very similar to previous years, and a lot of that's driven by the way our regulations work. You also approved our Microsoft licensing agreement, which is what allows us to teach a lot of the Microsoft courses that are there, and then the GPS, which allows us to maintain that. So all of those are important items to the day-to-day operations of the 10th-largest school system in the state. I wanted to add something to the Title I. I had the pleasure yesterday of encountering one of our teachers in just a public setting, and she came up and she said, I just want to say to you, I'm a new to Gaston County. I was a veteran teacher, but had relocated to Gaston County. And she said, in all my years of teaching, and she is at one of our high-needs schools, she said, I've never had the support that I've had here. She pointed out, and this is part of TSS program, a pinnacle leader working with her to help her with her technology, that she, each time she had asked someone, it said, oh, you don't have to do that. We get to ask this person to help us do that, and it would be a literacy teacher. It was a curriculum facilitator. So she said, the wraparound services that she felt as a new teacher, and even though she was a veteran, she still knew who Risa Hall was and the support that was coming through there. So it was really a compliment to the work that you all have supported over the last couple of years. And what you heard Ms. Buchanan talking about, that these resources are in the schools. I know that as we talk about our budget, the question always comes up about, oh, they got all this central stuff. Folks, we don't have central stuff. We got vacancies all in this building as far as, you all now have a nice conference room that used to occupy folks. And so our assets are outing the schools, and we continue to push those out in the schools, and we appreciate you supporting that. We have had some great things go on in our district. For anybody who, I'm going to put Ms. Cherry on the spot, what would you rate Friday afternoon at Sadler Elementary?
That was fantastic. I could not believe the amount of enthusiasm and the people that were there from every aspect of life, from pro-football players to their mothers, to every type of business leader, professional person, and they were all enthusiastic and thrilled with the Junior Achievement Program. It was phenomenal.
So you all know, but so that all of our people watching online, this is one of two elementary schools that gets taken over for the day. And each classroom is filled with an outside business professional who teaches it. And Ms. Guthrie's church has partnered with us. The Lynx has partnered with us. This past Friday, there were two big fraternity sororities, the Omega Psi Phi fraternity. Not only did they donate $10,000 to the Media Center for books, but they also, there was a group of men that came in fully dressed in suits and provided role models to those students and worked with them. And it was very powerful, and they stayed at the end and recognized Dr. Sadler and his longstanding commitment to this community. And their motto is really powerful, lifting as you climb. So what good is it for me to move forward if I don't lift someone up with me, was the theme of that. It was very powerful. And their sister sorority is the Delta Sigma Theta.
Delta.
And they were there in force as well. And between the two groups, they gave each teacher a $50 gift card and stressed that they were not to spend it on their classroom, but to do something for themselves. So it was a great day. We appreciate the partnership with Junior Achievement. Tony Powell was recognized for his support of the school district. He serves on numerous committees, but he also has some flexibility in his role at Firestone, and they underwrote this program. And so we're very thankful for that partnership. Also, a group that you all have seen do work for us, Paradigm 360, they have shown what a true partner is. They organized this day, and on Thursday, they had a STEM day for three of our elementary schools where they were allowed to bring their fourth and fifth graders to the convention center and met, and some of the pro-football players were there. So it was just a really powerful thing, and it just shows how our community is involved in our school system, and we're very honored for that. At the same time, we have a lot of other good things going on in the community. Our Career and Technical Education Oversight Committee that you all had had, the one that was mandated by the state in the past budget, they had their first meeting this past week. They spent two hours here. Mr. Buchanan presented to them and showed all that they had talked about in their initial committee and what they had laid out to do and all that had been accomplished towards that. And they were very impressed with that, and that committee will continue to work forward. Mr. Tim Goss was selected to be the chairman of that committee, and as I told Mr. Powell, because he was late getting there, he got to be the vice chair of the committee from that part. So other things that are going on in Career and Technical Education, tomorrow is the day that is unique in Gaston County in that all eighth graders will have an opportunity to tour a local business and organization in our community. So it's Students at Work Day in Gaston County, and that'll be an exciting day as we fan out through all that. Also, I want you to remember that on March 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Gaston College, we'll be having our Career and Technical Education Manufacturing Career Expo, and that is stepping up with further involvement from the business community, and they have done a great commitment there, so we'll look forward to good numbers at that. Want to remind you that I mentioned earlier, our parent advisory meeting will be Tuesday, March 27th, and at Ashbrook High School, beginning at 6:00. And any parent that is watching is invited to attend. Our schools have reached out and tried to invite folks on their school improvement team or their PTO, but anyone is welcome and is open to the public. A big, huge event will be going on this Sunday at 3:00 p.m., and that is the grand opening of Stanley Middle School. And it has been an enthusiastic time. I applaud Rebecca Huff-Studler, her staff, and all that they have done, particularly putting up with me bringing folks through there, because we are very proud of that facility. And each time I'm in there, someone comes up and says, thank you for this. They really appreciate, and it's very humbling to be a part of that. Finally, we have two weeks of weather to get through, and if you haven't seen, there's a weather advisory for Wednesday. But we hope that all will go well so that on Friday, March 30th, we can begin spring break on Good Friday, and it will continue all the way through the week of the 6th. So that is my comments. Mr. Vice Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity, and we do not need a closed session for personnel.
Great, thank you. Before I ask for adjournment, our next board meeting is April 16th, and I do want to wish everyone a safe and wonderful spring break, the first week of April. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Dedman for adjournment. Second, Mr. Moore, all in favor? Good evening.
Great job. That was a well, well.